I'm gonna call the May Agenda Meeting to order. We'll go into committee reports and motions. Uh, we'll start with the P and T Commission. Thank you, sir. Animal Services tonight. Thank you. Commissions.
Next tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Move into Community Service.
Yes, sir. We have two resolutions this evening. A resolution of thirty-one to condemn the structure located at eighteen-six-two-three, uh, I thirty, and for code enforcement to raise said property in accordance with Arkansas State Law and City Ordinance and for other purposes. Resolution thirty-two, a resolution to request the Seline County Tax Collector plays a certified lien against real property located at six-thirteen Houston Drive as a result of incurred expenses by the City of Benton and in accord to state law and city ordinance and for other purposes.
All right. Anyone have any questions from the Council? Here's none. We'll move down to Finance Committee. Please, Councilmember Morrow will do it for us this evening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. They have six resolutions out of Finance. A week ago, we have resolution number thirty-three. This is a res- resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with CareLink. This is for the management of the Benton Senior Center, a continuation of that, and to be at the same rate as last year. Second resolution is number thirty-four. This is amending the twenty-twenty-five Parks Budget. This will increase the expenditure appropriation in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars for the final tend-to-part light loan payment. Uh, and this is again, uh, last payment in our budget, and this is for that final payment. Uh, resolution number thirty-five is declaring certain property a surplus and authorizing the sale of the surplus property at auction. That's out of our Police Department. And we have resolution thirty-six. This is recognizing the services of Lieutenant Curtis Wood to the citizens of Benton and awarding him his badge and duty weapon in recognition of those services. Resolution number thirty-seven is also recognizing the services of Office Manager Sissy Brown to the citizens of Benton and awarding her a wooden bench in recognition of those services, and I believe that's forty-six years, which is incredible. So, we'll be recognizing her tonight. And then finally, Mr. Mayor, we have resolution number thirty-eight. This is accepting a three-year-old Belgian Malinois named K-9 Cash that was donated to the Benton Police Department. That's gonna join our K-9 program. And that's all from Finance.
All right. Anyone have a question about any of these? We'll move to the Parks Committee.
Yes, Mayor, I have actually two ordinance. First one being ordinance twenty-five of twenty-twenty-five, ordinance amending the usage rates of Riverside Park and for other purposes. And, uh, the other ordinance I have is ordinance number twenty-six of twenty-twenty-five, and ordinance amending ordinance number forty-nine of twenty-twenty-two, usage rates for the Parks and Recreation Department and for other purposes. Those are the only two that I have.
Thank you. Any questions on the personnel, help?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one resolution, resolution thirty-nine of twenty-twenty-five, and that's a resolution determining that the City of Benton shall become a participating public employer of the Arkansas Public Employees Retirement System and for other purposes. That's all I have.
Any questions about the?
Mayor, I- I do have a question on this. Um, I'd like to make a motion to table it, and I don't know if this is appropriate time to do that or wait, but I would like to talk with.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have a question? All right. We'll move down to P and Z Commission.
We have ordinance number twenty-seven of twenty-twenty-five. It's an ordinance rezoning two-oh-six Third Street in the City of Benton, Seline County, Arkansas, from R-two Single Family District to detached housing to R-five Family, Multi-Family District and for other purposes. Next, we have ordinance number twenty-eight of twenty-twenty-five. It's an ordinance rezoning eight-oh-nine Pearl Street in the City of Benton, Seline County, Arkansas, from C-two General Commercial to R-two Fa- Single Family District, detached housing, and for other purposes. Our last one is an ordinance number twenty-nine of twenty-twenty-five. It's an ordinance rezoning partial number eight-hundred-zero-seven-five-zero-two-zero-zero-five, eight-hundred-zero-seven-five-zero-two-zero-zero-four, eight-hundred-zero-seven-five-zero-two-zero-zero-three, in the City of Benton, Seline County, Arkansas, from C-three Service Commercial to R-two Single Family District, detached housing, and for other purposes. And that's all I have this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any questions concerning? Here's none. We'll move to P and Z Commission.
I have one resolution, a resolution ratifying and confirming the appointment of Gary Farrell as Commissioner. He'll be coming back to the Board after several years of service. And that's all I have.
Any questions on this? Streets Committee.
Resolutions this evening. Uh, the first being resolution forty-one of twenty-twenty-five. It's a resolution expressing the willingness of the city to utilize federal aid transportation alternatives for recreational trails program fund. Uh, resolution forty-two of twenty-five. It's a resolution authori- authorizing the abandonment of an alley located at seven-nineteen and seven-twenty-one of South Market Street. And the last resolution, number forty-three of twenty-five, uh, a resolution setting the public hearing to hear the petition of John Young to abandon a portion of Hester Drive. A street in the City of Benton requiring public notice of the hearing and for other purposes. And that's all I have.
Anyone have any questions on? Attorney is will not be appointed. So, I will be calling him. He'll be on the phone to take- take the questions involved. He has sent his apology. Have any control. So, all right. We're gonna close the Agenda Meeting, and then we'll open up as soon as I get the City Attorney on the phone.
Chief, do we have Lieutenant Wood and- and Ms. Brown coming this evening? They're not- they're not coming tonight. Okay, thank you. Put you on speakerphone.
All right. All right. This time, I'm gonna call the May, uh, Annual, our monthly meeting, the Council Meeting to order. Uh, I ask everyone to stand. We have the head governors, Pastor Bob Joyce comes and offers the invocation, and then our pledge of allegiance, uh, councilman Don, we can read this.
Heavenly Father, thank you today. Give them many blessings, Father. Thank you, Lord, for the position that you've given each and every one here. You're a watchful Father. As they make decisions with your wisdom, for the benefit of all, pray, know thy name, son.
We're gonna take a five-minute break due to a city clerk error. We're gonna reconvene the, uh, council meeting at this time, and we'll start with committee reports and motions, and we'll start with community service. Wait, we gotta read the minutes. All right, you're gonna roll call. Here.
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 Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we'll move to community, the committee reports and motions, and we'll move to community service.
Yes, sir. Make a motion to read and adopt resolution thirty-one by title only.
Second. We have a motion in second to read and adopt resolution number thirty-one by title only. Is there anyone here from one-eight-six-two-three-I-thirty'd like to speak? See anyone at this time? Any questions from the council?
Yes.
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 All right. Resolution number thirty-one of twenty-five passes nine to one. Councilman Reed.
Sir, make motion three, resolution thirty-two of twenty-twenty-five by title only.
Motion in second to read and adopt resolution number thirty-two of twenty-twenty-five. Anyone here from six-thirteen Houston Drive? Seeing no one or hearing no one? Any questions from the council? Take a vote.
Yes.
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 Resolution number thirty-two of twenty-five has passed nine to one. Any questions? Finance Committee, Councilmember Morrow.
Yes, I have a resolution. I'd like to make a motion to read and adopt resolution number thirty-three of twenty-twenty-five by title only.
Second.
We have a motion in second to read and adopt resolution number thirty-three of twenty-twenty-five. Or anyone that done, you know, CareLink started managing last November. The council voted to, uh, pay the utilities thirty-five-hundred dollars a month. Uh, this is just a continuation of that. They went back out for bid in April. No one submitted a bid, so CareLink is continuing to manage until next April. Any questions or comments from the public? Counsel? Let's take a vote.
Yes.
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 All right. Resolution number thirty-three of twenty-five has passed nine to one. Councilmember Morrow.
Motion to, uh, adopt resolution number thirty-four of twenty-twenty-five by title only.
Right. We have a motion in a second to read and adopt resolution number thirty-four of twenty-twenty-five. This resolution allows the park to finish, this was year four on pavement, and this is paying one year off early, so it'll be the last and final pavement of the lights. They have, we have the cash to do that. We'll attend. Comments or questions from the public? From the council? Take a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right. Resolution number thirty-four of twenty-five has passed nine to one. Councilmember Morrow.
Make a motion to read and adopt in its entirety, resolution number thirty-five of twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second to read and adopt in entirety, resolution number thirty-five of twenty-twenty-five, please. We have one hundred thousand dollars. Comments, questions from the public? From the council? Take a vote.
Yes.
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 Resolution number thirty-five of twenty-five passes nine to one. Councilmember Morrow.
Make a motion to read and adopt in its entirety, resolution number thirty-six of twenty-twenty-five.
Right.
Motion in second to read and adopt in its entirety, resolution number thirty-six of twenty-five.
Yes.
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 All right. Resolution number thirty-six of twenty-five has passed nine to one. Councilmember Morrow.
Make a motion to read and adopt in its entirety, resolution number thirty-seven of twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to read and adopt, resolution number thirty-seven of twenty-five in its entirety. Usual circumstance, the bench was there when she started, uh, forty-six years ago, and that's the only thing she's asked for retirement, so I think it's a good request. Uh, any comments or questions from the public? Counsel?
Yes.
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 All right. Resolution number thirty-seven of twenty-five has passed nine to one. Councilmember Morrow.
Yes, this is my last resolution. I'll make a motion to read and adopt resolution number thirty-eight of twenty-twenty-five by title only.
We have a motion in second to read and adopt, resolution thirty-eight of twenty-five, please. This dog, if we had to go out and buy, it cost us about fifteen thousand dollars. It's already trained. The officer that will be handling the dog has already trained with the dog, uh, so, uh, it's good for our city. Are there any comments or questions from the public? On the council? Let's take a vote.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
All right. Resolution number thirty-eight of twenty-five has passed nine to one. Anything else, Councilmember Morrow?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to the Parks Committee. Councilmember Harper.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to read and adopt, resolution twenty-five of twenty-twenty-five, please.
Ordinance?
Ordinance. Sorry. Yes.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in second to read and adopt, ordinance number twenty-five of twenty-five, please. We're raising by one dollar. And so, we're raising the day pass by a whole dollar. Any questions or comments from the public? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I wasn't here last week, so I'm just curious with that increase. Do you, do we have any idea how much increased revenue you're projecting as a result?
For a year, not for the remainder of this year, or for a full year? Any other questions?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Ordinance number twenty-five of twenty-five has passed nine to one.
Just have one more ordinance. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to read and adopt, ordinance twenty-six of twenty-five, please.
Second.
We have a motion in second to read and adopt, ordinance number twenty-six of twenty-five.
Yes.
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 All right. Ordinance number twenty-six of twenty-five has passed nine to one. Anything else, Councilmember Harper?
No, not this time, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. We'll move down to Personnel, Help, uh, Committee. Councilmember Don.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to have read, read and adopt, resolution number thirty-nine of twenty-twenty-five by title only.
One? B and Z Commission, ordinance number twenty-seven? What else for lack of a second?
Like a motion to read and adopt ordinance number twenty-seven of twenty twenty-five.
Motion and second to read and adopt ordinance number twenty-seven of twenty twenty-five, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number twenty-seven of twenty-five passes nine to one.
I'd like to make a motion to read and adopt ordinance number twenty-eight of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, second, read and adopt ordinance number twenty-eight of twenty-five, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to read and adopt ordinance number twenty-nine of twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion, second, read and adopt ordinance number twenty-nine.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number twenty-nine of twenty-five passes eight to two. PUC Commission?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, read and adopt resolution, uh, forty of twenty twenty-five, please.
Second.
Motion second to read and adopt resolution forty of twenty twenty-five. Here it is, served on this commission, the bench here is getting out of hand. Take a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right, resolution forty of twenty-five passes nine to one.
All right, Mr. Mayor, uh, we have three resolutions, the first one being, uh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt, uh, resolution number forty-one of twenty twenty-five by title only.
Motion second to read and adopt resolution forty-one of twenty twenty-five. Basically, this will be for sidewalks on, uh, fourth street, like an eighty-twenty split. Questions from the public? Counsel? Take a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, resolution number forty-one of twenty-five passes nine to one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to adopt resolution number forty-two of twenty-five to be read by title only.
Motion second to read and adopt resolution number forty-two. Anyone here from seven nineteen, seven?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolution number forty-two. Councilmember Ann?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have one more resolution, number forty-three of twenty twenty-five, make a motion to be, uh, adopt and read, uh, by title only.
For everyone that showed up late last meeting, we start them at five p.m., so, any comments or questions from the public? The council? Take a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution number forty-three of twenty-five passes nine to one. Look on you, you got the calendar, it's gonna be, we start off with the first, first week, then four weeks, third, second week of June will be the, uh, meeting meetings, council meeting will be on the twenty-third, uh, third Thursday, even though city offices are closed, will happen at six P.M. on the nineteenth, our farmer's market will be open eight to one every Saturday through Monday, uh, so we have a lot of things going, uh, Chamber of Commerce will be on as well, A and P will also be on, uh, that, that Wednesday at three thirty. Doctor Nelson?
Yes, sir. The record state that on five twelve twenty-five, we had a personnel meeting, we had a forum, and the forum voted, uh, resolution number thirty-nine twenty twenty-five out to full council, there was nobody that voted against it, so something's happened over the last week that everybody's against it, so, uh, I apologize for bringing this up, but it was voted out by the, by the full committee, so, that's one of the explanations of what happened. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. During this meet? Thanks, Baxter.